Good evening and welcome, everyone. My name is Faith Price and I'm the Director of Prevention for All Nations Health Center here in Missoula. I'm also the Chair of the Healthy Missoula Youth Policy and Law Committee that's done a lot of work to bring Ben Court here. And there are, most of the committee members are here in this room, standing around doing different tasks. So they're a group of really amazing individuals and we've been planning this for a lot of months. So we want to thank you all for being here. You never know how many people are going to show up and I'm very happy with the size of our turnout. So thank you all, we appreciate you for coming out for this important conversation on the impacts of the legalization and commercialization of cannabis and also how we can prevent harms from underage cannabis use. I got my start in the prevention field personally, working as a youth development coordinator for the flagship program. Those of you who are from Missoula, I would assume have heard of flagship. I was one of the first youth development coordinators at Lowell Elementary when they started flagship there. But I've also spent time living in the state of Washington, who was one of the first states back in 2012 to legalize cannabis for use by adults over age 21. So I was there when that bill passed. And I was there in graduate school studying prevention science and learning about the ramifications of this new industry and its public health impacts as they began to emerge in the research and different reports. Personally, I study substance use prevention with Native American youth and I was seeing that this was becoming the substance of choice for Native youth. So it got me especially interested in cannabis and cannabis prevention. And when I moved home to Montana, back at the beginning of the pandemic, that's when Montana voted to legalize. And so I was like, okay, we have some work to do here based on what I've just learned in Washington. So tonight, we have the opportunity to hear from Ben Court, who's an author and cannabis policy expert from Colorado. And they're a state that has nearly 10 more years' experience with legal cannabis than we do here in Montana. So there's a lot to learn from our neighboring states. And following Ben's talk, we have a panel of local experts and folks with lived experience who are going to share their perspectives and we'll have an opportunity for questions and discussion from all of you. So be thinking of your questions. I want to mention that this event is sponsored by the Montana Alliance of Prevention, the Western Montana Mental Health Center, and the Healthy Missoula Youth Coalition. And we also want to thank MCAT for being here to record this for us. And before I introduce our speaker, I'd like to bring up my colleague Leah Fitch Brody from Missoula Public Health and she is the fabulous facilitator of the Healthy Missoula Youth Coalition. She's going to do a welcome on behalf of that coalition.
Thank you so much for being here. I appreciate it. It is a beautiful day in Missoula and you are here and just here to engage. And I'm just really excited about this discussion. So like Faith was saying, I facilitate an amazing group here in Missoula. I mean, just, I just appreciate you all so much and I, just makes me love coming to work. So I just, also just want to do a shout out. So the Healthy Missoula Youth Coalition has been around since the 90s and really our, what we are focused on is how can we prevent youth substance use by both increasing the protective factors that we have in our community and decreasing risk factors. These are some of our organizations that are part of Healthy Missoula Youth. And this is our vision. We really want to see a thriving Missoula County where individuals and families feel supported by their community and are empowered to make choices that positively impact their health around substances. So like Faith was saying, we've been working on specifically cannabis-related issues for the last few years. And actually, this committee did quite a bit of work, the Policy and Law Committee did quite a bit of work of looking at what are we seeing in our community related to youth cannabis use? And you know, after the event or even, you know, if you just want to get up and walk around, you can see back there are some posters from an environmental scan that we did last year to really help us gather what are we seeing? You know, this is a fairly new industry here in Montana. So one of the concerns that we have are that we are seeing an uptick in youth use of marijuana. So the youth that are using on a regular basis. We're also seeing, I know this slide is a little confusing, but basically this is just to demonstrate that we are seeing an increase in ED and emergency department and hospitalizations in Missoula County. And in fact, most significantly, among our 0 to 14-year-olds, we saw a 142% increase in emergency department and hospitalizations. So what are we working on? We're working a lot with schools. They're really trying to grapple with, you know, what they're seeing in their own schools. We're actually going to have a panelist here tonight from one of our middle schools. So trying to do some trainings with teachers, you know, consulting with them on what kind of curriculum and substance use prevention work they can be doing. We are also, we just launched a campaign, you might have heard of it, it's called Can We Chat? C-A-N-N, We Chat. And basically, this is for parents or any, really any adult who has a youth in their life, who wants to know a little bit more about today's cannabis and how to talk about these products with their youth in a way that really helps them understand. So, and then, yeah. We also have been working a lot with some of our local leaders, I think some of them are here tonight, and really looking at what can we do in Missoula to systematically really help prevent youth use and the harms related to that. So I just, again, want to thank you so much for being here. This is our contact information. There's also information over there so that you can contact us if you want to get involved and learn more. So with that, Faith.
So I'll introduce our speaker, our main speaker this evening. Ben Court is the author of Weed, Inc., The Truth About THC, The Pot Lobby, and The Commercial Marijuana Industry. And he has a new book coming out later this month that I'm very excited about. He himself has been in recovery since 1996 and has worked in the treatment and recovery field for many years. He's a board member of Smart Approaches to Marijuana, which is a national organization, and has helped shape cannabis policy in Colorado and on a national level. Ben has been touring Montana communities, this is his second week doing so, he's been all over the state, to discuss effective policy to discourage underage use based on his experience in Colorado and the treatment field. So let's give him a warm welcome from Missoula.
It's always so nice when people clap before you talk because then you can do anything. So let me just get this right, our panel is going on at quarter to?
Six.
So I'm going to triage down a little bit and do my best to just give you the information that I feel like is the most crucial. And I understand we've got some fantastic panelists this evening, adolescent psychiatrists, if I understand. Oh, I could have been happier to hear that. And so we will, you'll be able to learn a lot more from these other folks. Let me just kind of set the stage maybe with a couple of things for you. I'm going to go through a few things. Here's other stuff that I do. I just want to point out a couple other boards because I really do appreciate the SAM board, but I get myself into a lot of trouble on this because I'm either way too conservative for some people or way too liberal for other people, as highlighted by the boards that I sit on. So I sit on the Board of Directors for something called NOWGAP, which is the National Association of Lesbian, Gay, Transgender, Bisexual Treatment Providers and Their Allies. I sit on the Board of NMI, which is ONDCP Project, which is straight out of the White House, with the University of Florida's Drug Policy Institute. SAM Safe, which is Sober AF, and we totally mean that, entertainment. The idea is safe sober zones at concerts and events and stuff like this. Johnny's Ambassadors, which if you're not familiar with, is a pretty incredible organization, woman who lost her son. And the, this is a group of physicians, of which I am not. The International Academy on the Science and Impact of Cannabis. In fact, I'm the only non-physician scientific advisor for it. Everybody should take a picture of this, remember this, this is, this is the repository of data. SAM's got a great repository of data, but the Isaac one is just the best. You go to library and then it's alphabetized everything you'd ever want to learn. Cardiovascular, psychological, epidemiology, neonatal. And it's got a summary of all of the studies and then you can click down into it and read the study itself. Fantastic resource for you. So there's like two or three things I want to share with you tonight. And the first is that I'm not here to talk to you about weed. For the love of God, please, like, don't, don't come with the weed thing. I don't care about cannabis. It's not what drives me, it's not what is interesting to me. What I care about and what I'm here to talk about is THC. THC being, of course, the component inside of the cannabis plant that gets you high. If you don't have THC, you simply have hemp. It was a really interesting thing that made some cool products for a very long time and no THC, no problem, more THC, more, more problems. It's a little bit crassly put, but it'll work for tonight's science. The market that exists commercially, where I'm from, Colorado, in Montana, of course, is a market that is built around supporting the sale of THC, not the sale of cannabis. If it were about selling weed, I'm not here. I'm letting you guys figure this out on your own. We're unaware that the powers that be behind this entire thing, probably about $30 billion industry this year, we are unaware of how focused they are on isolating and presenting one component of this plant to you. There's this old saying, joke, whatever, that the, when they declassified all those tobacco papers, there's a great one that they, they used to refer to cigarettes as nicotine delivery systems. Screw the cigarette, screw the tobacco. It's about getting the nicotine into you. Why? Because nicotine's exceptionally addictive, right? It's about 54, 55% addiction with that. We are going to talk about THC, the part of the plant that gets you high. And even if you've heard me speak before or suffered through anything I've written, I'm not a good author, I don't know how this next book's going to come out. I just hope to be mean and crass enough in it that it'll work. I've got new data for you. This is really exciting new data. Beginning in 1960, ending in 2011, for some political reasons, the University of Mississippi gave us representative sample of the average THC potency found within the cannabis plant. It's really amazing dataset. I mean, it's the kind of thing researchers sort of dream of, same people, same equipment, same standards. What I want to highlight to you is right here, writing the first book, I got to meet a lot of people who loved weed. And surprisingly, very few of them actually consumed it. I met a lot of researchers, I met a lot of people, I mean, particularly in Europe and some of the greatest researchers in the world's come from Israel on this, but we had so many people who really understand the cannabis plant and appreciated all the different components inside of that plant. And what they would always point out to me is that what naturally occurs inside of the cannabis plant is about half of a percent THC. And if we look at this as a breakdown of those data from 1960 to 1974, it's just kind of hard to see here, so I'm just breaking it down for you a little bit. Cannabis in its natural form is, most importantly, but we don't have time for the science of this, it's a one-to-one ratio of THC to CBD. Extremely important. That's the plant that God gave us. The, the plant that we have since cultivated keeps CBD down so we can breed more THC into it. Now, if you look at this, 1960 to 1974, we've got a pretty significant increase when you look at it on like a chart like this. It's a 3X. We go from an average of 2 to an average of 7.5. It's a little better than a 3X. Didn't matter. We still weren't seeing many issues associated with this. And, and, and so I'm going to get a little bit into some, you're going to hear some opinion from me, and anytime I give you opinion, I'm going to tell you I'm giving you opinion. If I'm giving you scientific fact, I'm giving you scientific fact that's appropriately cited in this to a level to allow for continuing medical education. But the opinion that I want to give you here is that it was very hard to find a lot of issues associated with this cannabis, with this plant. We'd find them. I mean, there's some brilliant people, including a much better author than me and a good friend who wrote a book about all the violence associated with it, and he went back to the 1400s. And what I've always kind of argued back on that with is you can absolutely find one-off examples of THC doing really intense things to individuals' brains and bodies. However, from a macro data, from a societal level data, public health stuff we're thinking about, you can't. We don't start to really bump into issues with this for a little while. And sorry, man, I saw you change it, but I feel like now I'm neglecting this side and I got to go here. This plant did very little damage to the human brain and body as a rule. Individually, of course, there were exceptions to that, but as a rule, this plant played a really important role inside of traditional forms of medicine. It's one of 50 essential herbs inside of traditional Chinese medicine. It has a role in early American history, in pre-European American history. Cannabis is an interesting plant, man. And it wasn't until we really started screwing with it that we started to have problems. It's like, it's like everything else, though, like, give, give humanity enough time and we'll ruin just about everything. But I want to kind of show you the, the way that we end up doing this. So if you'll note now, our chart goes from 1960 to 2020. Here, we're at about 16%. And I want you to notice right here, because this was when a really interesting thing happened. This was when a study came out that said two things, that, so I've been inside of the treatment world forever. I work inside of large hospitals and public health systems and I always have paid attention to this stuff. And cannabis has always been kind of one of these things we've sort of paid attention to. There's obviously other things, except, and I don't know how much, I can't wait, how much to keep up on the research, but I was colleagues with Dr. Christian Thurston for six years at a UCH, who's led most of the writing on the adolescent brain and so much of that work came out of our group. But the, the people who looked at adolescent brains were always somewhat concerned with it. I've only ever worked with adults, I didn't think about it too much. In 2012, we see this study that says two things. It's a big study, huge N, like 400,000 people, and it says something that didn't matter and something that really mattered. It said about 10% of all adults who were exposed to cannabis develop a substance use disorder to it. Put that in layman's term, if everybody smokes weed, only about 10% of the grownups are going to have a problem with it. Now, where it got interesting, it's that same study said, but if this happens in adolescence, if you consume in adolescence, that goes to 16, 17%. And they, the coolest part about this study is they actually told us what adolescence was in a real way. They didn't use this 18 nonsense. It was frontal lobe myelination that they finally gave us. They said adolescence being your mid-20s. I think they used 24 for females and 26 for men in this particular study. So what we saw in this was this really interesting kind of like, wow, 17%, almost double if kids are getting it. We all, we know, listen, addiction's a pediatric onset disease. We know this, it always starts with kids. I'm a 12-step guy, very rarely am I sitting in a meeting when somebody's like, ah, picked up my first beer at 40, you know? It's not really how it works. But right here, this is kind of one of these what's going on moments. Is, is what's happening with the THC inside of the adolescent brain doing stuff we're not used to, creating rates of addiction that we're not used to? Now, the real story, and this is the data that has been so difficult to get. I wish I had 10 minutes to explain the process of getting these data right here. This is CBD staying the same. This is the commercial market. This is the plant? That's an appropriate reaction. This is the plant? This is the product? And I'm not comparing averages to high points, I'm comparing averages to averages. And the last I've got is 2020, and that cost me a lot to get. Freedom Information Act filings and stuff. To be very clear with you, Montana, little damage was happening to the human brain and body. As our Surgeon General told us four years ago, there's no safe amount of THC in the adolescent brain. We never wanted this inside of the developing brain. But as a rule, it's not really doing a lot of much bad stuff. This, on the other hand, is just kicking our asses. Inside of my world, where we're like, we've had to run and run and run and try and get ahead of this thing, people don't know what to do with this because of the amount of it that we're admitting and how severe this affects people. So let me point something out to you, that there's been an interesting arc in our perception of risk around cannabis. So we made cannabis illegal, anybody? 37, 1937, Tax Stamp Act, was when we really made cannabis like actually illegal. And we made cannabis illegal because our government was run by really thoughtful, mostly medical professionals who deeply cared about the well-being of our country and they wanted what was best for us. Yeah, right, we were a bunch of racist assholes and we wanted to figure out more ways to lock people up. So in 1937, I've got a letter, it's in the next book coming out, there's a letter from a senator to another that's like, hey, as soon as we make the marijuana, and he spelled it the messed up way, as soon as we make it illegal, it'll give us better access to, and I quote, "jazz clubs and barrios." Subtle, dude, subtle. 1937, we make it legal. 1937, Reefer Madness comes out. If you haven't seen this thing, it's incredible. It's incredible. Because everybody in America watched it. And there were multiple storylines in it, but the most intense one was basically this really well-to-do white woman who goes out on the town and smokes a little bit of the devil's lettuce, next thing you know, she's being sexually assaulted by four black men and she jumps out of a window. Dirty stuff. 1937 is a result of this. Where do you think perception of risk around cannabis was? Do you think people thought it was dangerous? Oh, God, terrified of it. The devil's lettuce will ruin, look at, she jumped out the window. So in 1937, we see weed as this terrible thing, when in 1937, the cannabis people were consuming was kind of like, eh. Today, there's this great study called Monitoring the Future that gives us all the data from these kids. Today, we've never recorded a lower perception of risk among youth. So there's never been a lower perceived risk and there has never been a higher actual risk. Because what they're consuming, this, is very different than this. And it manifests multiple ways. The first one that I'm going to talk about, because what I care about the most with this is addiction, what you're looking at here is the DSM criteria for substance use disorder or to use the pejorative addiction. If one meets two or three of these, eh, mild substance use disorder, we don't want to see it with a kid, but it's usually just like college. If somebody meets four or five, it's moderate. Six or above, how I was in my entire world, that's severe. So here's the criteria, they're not substance-specific, obviously it applies to cannabis, it's always applied to THC, even though there's been a popular narrative that there hasn't. The crazy thing happens in the last version of that DSM where we get a definition and billing codes for cannabis withdrawal. Okay, people, 15 years ago, the idea of physical detox from THC, laughable. Like, what's it mean to be detoxing from weed? Like, does it mean you're going to school? Is that what detoxing from weed looks like? I'm sorry, I don't mean to be too much of a jerk, like, are you playing way less Call of Duty? Have you realized Yanni's music really sucks? Is that what being detoxing from cannabis looks like? No, on the global severity score, global severity scale, it's marked as markedly ill. And I love going into detail, my favorite thing lately is spending time with medical providers and treatment providers, getting into cannabis withdrawal. I won't, but I'll tell you it's serious. And I'll tell you right now, like, weed shouldn't do this. And cannabis doesn't do this. High potency THC, on the other hand, does this. Let's watch our language. Says the guy who can't get through 10 minutes without cussing. Let's watch our language with the cannabis thing. High potency THC, 16% and above, that's when I'm calling everything high potency THC. We can't talk cannabis anymore. Now, there's so much I could get into with this. There was a manual, a manual that was written, it's now, it's med schools and it's Cannabis and Medicine: An Evidence-Based Approach. Have you seen the Springer Publishing? Experts from every subspecialty of medicine contributed their chapters, absolutely fantastic. I got to write the chapter on treatment and recovery, and so some of this is from here. But here's the only thing I really want to point out to you right now, is that, remember that study I told you about in 2012, we paid attention to, 10% of adults? That study, exact same N, same group of people, same researchers, eight-year gap, October of 2020, the rates of addiction in adults had gone from 10% to 30%. A 3X increase in addiction. Listen, anytime there's something insane like that in a longitudinal study that happens, somebody's going to write, the authors are going to be like, uh, here's what we think happened. In this one, they were all like, all we've got is potency. We can't really come up with anything other than potency. So again, we've created something that is considerably more addictive. I wish I had time to get into tolerance with you, I'm not going to do that. And in the higher rates of addiction, the next big issue that we have is the mental health concerns, the significant mental health issues associated with it. These three factors are the three most important factors in both of those, when we're both considering addiction and mental health. Let me give you an illustration that I think usually works. You want to, you want to avoid problems with weed, with THC, most substances, but certainly with this one. Age of onset, frequency of use, and THC potency. So age of onset, anytime free frontal myelination, the farther you are from having a matured brain, the more damage you're going to do. And brains don't get matured till you're in your mid to late 20s, okay? So it's better to initiate at 18 than 17, but we'd really rather you didn't initiate until like 28. And here's the way I like to think about that, is you have, my phone is your brain, and every time I put THC into my brain, it's like dropping my phone, I'm doing damage and potential damage to my phone. I don't get my case on my phone till I'm in my mid-20s. Don't ever drop your phone before you get your case on it, okay? Like, I have this OtterBox thing that protects everything and is full of gel or whatever, like, your brain's not fully developed until then. And it's so much bigger than this. You run the risk of rewiring, of changing physical structure, if we had time, we could get into it all. It's fascinating stuff. Don't drop your phone before you get your case. Next thing, frequency of use. For the love of God, all things in moderation, people. At what point do we decide that this was the only substance on the earth, intoxicating substance, that we could use multiple times a day and nobody think it was weird? Like, you can't hit a vape pen and get high five, six, seven, eight times a day and think that's normal, but it's been normalized. So if you're going to drop your phone, once, maybe twice a month, all things within reason, drop your phone if you're going to a concert with your friends and you're absolutely not driving. Drop your phone if you want to revisit Friday or dazed and confused because they're not funny unless you've dropped your phone. Drop your phone if you ever want to figure out what the wall is about. That's when we drop our phone. You don't do this every day. Potency, if you're going to drop your phone, do it from an inch or two off the ground. This climbing up on ladders and end zone spiking it down is trouble. I'm going to summarize a bunch of science right now. I'm going to apologize a little bit for how... Single-digit THC potency. The issues really start with double-digit. Remember, I'm not talking to a single adolescent here. You don't get to touch this until you got your case on your phone. Don't drop your phone all the time, do it from an inch or two off the ground. Your issues are significantly reduced with it. Now, got to pick and choose what we're going to do here. This is the, I think, the most important one. I think, and what I've sort of been telling everybody who'll listen for a couple of years, is the thing that got tobacco was when the country finally agreed that it was causing cancer. My grandfather grew up thinking three out of four doctors prefer camels because camel told him that. There's a big, big portion of American society that's grown up thinking that not only is THC not bad, it is absolutely a value add. The science, and unfortunately, it takes science a long time to catch up with public opinion. Like, there's a lot of stuff we can say with great assurance scientifically around substances. Like, there's a lot of stuff we can say with great assurance scientifically around substances, this one in particular. But it's going to take a minute until the average person on the street understands that, like it did with cancer and tobacco. I think that the link between high potency THC and mental illness is going to be the thing that changes the whole conversation, brings it down. I don't cite during presentations that come at the end, but I had to throw you in on this one. This is a meta-study that was absolutely gargantuan in undertaking. So much work these people put into this because they looked at six point nine million people, almost seven million people. And what they determined through this is that of men twenty-one to thirty, which is when schizophrenia usually hits, men twenty-one to thirty, thirty percent of them never would have developed their schizophrenia had it not been for their THC consumption. The other thing that it showed us was that any use of high potency THC increases your risks of schizophrenia fourfold. Yeah. Here's a crazy one. This is old thing, like causation correlation. Is it actually causal? Do more people get high because we're mentally ill? Or are more people mentally ill because they get high? I'm almost positive that in my situation, it was my mental illness that led to it, but I had genetics anyway. Everybody in my family's drunks, we're all drunks, but everybody's crazy too. The amount of psychosis in my family is ridiculous. But I grew up very poor. I grew up on public assistance. It's not like I could go to a psychiatrist and talk about my feelings with a therapist and get medication. So I got high because it worked. And then it stopped working and it made it a little worse. But we've always wondered, is it the mentally ill people getting high or the high people who are getting mentally ill? We've been able, for about five years now, was when we first saw really good sound conclusive evidence with it, but it's just continued to stack. So we're five years into this now, we can tell you that it is, high potency THC has been determined to be causal for both acute and chronic depression and anxiety. Dude, like, again, that's not weed, man. Weed's not doing that. That's high potency THC. It's been determined causal in psychosis. If you're not familiar, psychosis is just a big grab word for all of the crazy things put together. Daily use increases your odds of developing psychosis fivefold. And if you have some genetic precursors, there's a couple of them, that risk goes to eightfold. We are finally seeing, and this is only in the last eighteen months or so, some meta-studies showing a dose responsiveness for psychosis. So simply put, the more you consume, the worse your odds are that you'll develop it. And then, of course, this one I have to point out because I've got this diagnosis. I have a major depressive disorder as well as PTSD, which I treat with medication and therapy and my twelve-step diet, exercise, all the things. Never miss my weekly therapy when I'm traveling, never miss my meds even when I'm out hunting. But it's contraindicated for use with PTSD. And this is one of the approved areas we have where everybody's like, we should give this to people who have PTSD. Contraindicated means, crassly put, making worse. You're not going to do good with this. There are five hundred and twelve known drug-drug interactions between cannabis and pharmaceutical drugs. Ten of them severe or potential comorbid. The conditions, though, are the part that scare me. The people who are using high potency THC who already have PTSD, who already have an anxiety disorder, depressive disorder, because that fire is already burning and what they're doing is coming in and just dumping kerosene on it. And this is too complex to get into right now, other than to tell you that there's a very strong association with suicide, particularly teen suicide. But I don't think we're ever going to be able to tell if that's causal or not. I want to get to the solution with you. But before that, what I would like to point out, in the ridiculous politics that rules everything that it seems like happens around drug policy in this country. We've never nailed it, people. Like, why everybody thought we were going to get this one right? When the substance that we police the most closely, alcohol, is far and twice over the most damaging and deadly substance in this country? Tobacco, killing three hundred thousand people or so a year. Federal government's in charge of that. Everybody's like, oh, well, we'll get this. We've never gotten it. And I, I gotta tell you, if I showed you data like this that was divided by ten or twenty, move the decimal point twice, and that was in a chemical that was found inside of this beverage or this can lining, every one of these in America is off the shelf tomorrow. However, we can say conclusively these things. And you know where we get back? Nah-uh, whatever. Reef Madness, it's just weed. I got a friend who, after sending his son to three treatment programs and acute psychosis that almost took his life. Amazing kid now. He's four years sober, just killing sponsors, a million guys. Went fishing with him last year in Alaska. Love this kid. But my buddy likes to say the three most dangerous language or words in the English language, it's just weed. Because they don't get the same sort of thought with it. So I want to give you some tips and advice because I think that's why most of you, it seems like the community was here. I'm not going too hard into the science or anything. I want to tell you stuff I've seen that works because we got to start getting through to people in a very different way. This part right here, that's just for providers and professionals. You got to treat the psychosis and the mental illness first, obviously, because good luck getting through and talk therapy to somebody who's in a state of acute psychosis. So if you're in this situation and you're trying to have a conversation with somebody whose reality dramatically differs from everybody else's around them, get them to a professional. Get them to somebody who can get some appropriate meds on board. Because we can't, how in the world am I ever going to talk logically with somebody who's in a state of acute psychosis and paranoia? You can't do it. So abstinence and then get the meds on board. Next thing is, once you've established that our reality is the same, I want you to consider their reality in that they grew up differently than you did, in all likelihood. And you know what? We can walk around, I'm forty-five and, and I still, you know, grew up in a drugs are bad, okay? And they haven't grown up like this. It's a value add. There's no stigma. In fact, there have been specific stigma-reducing campaigns that the cannabis industry's run. I've written about them and I don't know why, like, listen, things that are harmful to our health should have stigma with them. All things should have a little stigma, like eating poorly and doing it. But we want to get rid of it so we can sell more. So consider the reality and don't come at people too hard. Come alongside them. I would encourage you, when you have these conversations, and we have a slide that's going to tell you just how to ask way more questions than you tell. I see parents and caregivers all the time start going at kids with statistics. Yeah, I've never met a kid in my life who ever gave a crap about statistics, like, not one, ever. Unless it had something to do with his fantasy football team or whatever, like, none. Because when you're a kid, it's never going to happen to you. Right? You're eighteen, you can live forever. You're like, this is not going to happen to you. My, my friend, Dr. Thurstone, likes to say that the adolescent brain is a great big giant gas pedal and no brake pedal. We're not, we're not trying to talk logically. We're trying to talk in a way that just connects. And so when you ask more than tell, I would strongly encourage you to not argue every single point. I mean, the amount of stupid crap that I hear from people. The, the, the like, oh, you know what weed is a gateway drug to? The presidency. All our presidents smoked weed. Well, okay, maybe three, but yeah, no, no kidding, no kidding, cool. Why is it you think that you can't stop? Thomas Jefferson and George Washington blazed one on the porch of Monticello together every single night. Sweet, no kidding. But you keep feeling crazy when you consume and you know something ain't right. These laws all just come from a bunch of racist pricks back in the early nineteen, yes, they do. What's that got to do with the fact that you've tried to stop four times again? So when I say, I don't, I don't want to argue all of it, I also won't get, you can't be a pushover. You got to hold to some things. And when people throw out the, oh, it's just weed. Well, I'll give you one on that. I'm going to skip these next two just for time. We'll come back to them if we have an opportunity. Do you know, somebody want to give me a working definition? Like, give me an example of a microaggression? These things are amazing. Microaggressions are just filthy. Oh, you're so smart for a female. He's so articulate for a black man. Oh, he works so hard for a Hispanic. That's the kind of shit that cuts so deep that, that knife is still twisting when we walk away and we walk away and we're kind of like, huh huh, I didn't even, did I do what? Uh, what? I just said you're smart for a woman. The microaggressions that we have to watch out for in this world are equally as damaging. Believe me. So you don't do any, like, real drugs? You think you're addicted to weed? You think weed, it's the weed that's making you crazy? But no real drugs. You don't actually do drugs. Just smoke weed. One of the things that people don't understand at all is, is what addiction actually is. And when people will say things to me like, yeah, but they're just addicted to weed. Like, oh, God, what is addiction? Let's do just a tiny bit of crowdsourcing. We got a minute, ten minutes, actually, we're going to be fine. What is addiction? Don't know professional, technical definitions. What do you think of? What's addiction? It's a lost ability to control. Great. What else? Physical, chemical dependence have to have. What else? I tell you, it's super isolating. I tell you, super duper lonely. It doesn't help me connect with you. It doesn't do much to improve families. Doesn't do much to improve communities. Addiction's an extremely lonely place. It's isolating. An addiction to anything is really scary and damaging. I don't care what it's to, to, just all the other process things we can do. Shopping, gambling, compulsive sexual behaviors, alcohol, cocaine, THC, it doesn't matter. Addiction takes something from our souls, man. So there is never, ever any just before the word addiction. So if somebody has an addiction to THC, be careful with that one. And remember these next ones. This is one of these fortunately, unfortunately things. Typically, the progression of the disease of cannabis use disorder takes a lot longer than other ones to manifest because it's not like moms narcin-ing you in the front yard from smoking too much weed, right? Or too much THC potency. The cops are probably kind of giggling a little and get out of here, kid. Like, it takes longer to get to realize the consequences. So a lot of the times, you've had people who've gone way down the road to this addiction and the mental illness part of it has kicked in because the THC-induced psychosis, I think we're going to hear from a little later, but the THC-induced psychosis, you guys, is like, it's some off-the-charts stuff. We treat it every day, but, but the problem is how hard motivation can be to find because of the normalization that's existed inside of the world, inside of their peer groups and inside of cultural considerations. So the, the norm here in peer groups, the, the bonding that people have around this subject, this particular thing, our political identities, our recreational identities, our every identity. Have you ever seen anybody wearing a meth hat? Alright, or heroin socks? No, man. But this thing enjoys a different place in society than any other intoxicant, is the play on words in the title of my new book. Because all of you know alcohol can be a problem for people, right? It's not a single person who, if I'm like, oh, I got to get off the bottle, you're going to be like, what? No, you can't get addicted to alcohol. It's natural. No one's ever, um... If I'm shooting dope and I'm like, hey, yo, I got to stop shooting dope, even the people I'm shooting dope with are going to be like, you should totally stop shooting dope. But if I say, hey, I got to stop smoking weed, everybody's going to be like, whaaat? The problem is most of them, because you tend to surround yourself with like-minded people, most of those people, you're like, they smoke the same way, they consume the same way. So they're like, hang on, if he has a problem, he uses, he uses... It's not addictive. Nobody's ever died from it. It's just a plant. You can't possibly get addicted to it. We've got this. So the normalization that exists inside of peer groups, what I propose to people is that by the time somebody raises their head and actually asks for care, they've had to go through so much more crap than everybody else has because there's been no societal support. The other thing I want to hit you with here is the cultural considerations. I do a lot of work inside of professional and collegiate athletics. It's one of my favorite things in the world to do. And a couple of years ago, working with a professional athlete, and we had a lot in common. We grew up similarly and he was going home for Christmas and he was like three months sober and he was like, dude, I'm not looking forward to Christmas. I'm like, right, family sucks. He's like, oh, I didn't tell you about cannabis Christmas. Like, you didn't tell me about cannabis Christmas. Grandma buys a bunch of weed, saves up for a month or two. It's all on the table. He's like, I probably won't see any of my cousins. I absolutely won't see my grandma if I don't go over for cannabis Christmas. It's the norm. I smoked with people's grandparents when I left Colorado and ended up in DC. Like, they were just, like, it was the norm. You know the average age of exposure in Montana for the first cannabis use? They told me up in Billings. I can't give you this exactly because I can't cite it for sure, but the Billings people told me and they had the data. The average first exposure is twelve. Average first exposure, if you were a Native American, guess? Eh, nine. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So look, there's a million other things we can cover on this. I want to go to our panel because I can't wait to hear what they have to say. I'd like to leave you with this idea that Marijuana Anonymous is online and it's a great thing. And this is going to be the last slide that I share with you. Because I am always asked, what can I do? How can we have this conversation? What's next? In the book that's coming out next month, I have three different chapters that are like, you can pull out. One is to providers, medical and psychiatric, psychological professionals. The other is to the user. And then another is to parents and loved ones who want to talk with this stuff. And I, I know that there are some people here who have folks in their lives who are struggling. So I want to give you a couple of practical application things. Never, ever, ever have your conversations where you express concern in a time of crisis. Never, ever, ever, when they come home and they're intoxicated or you know they were driving or something terrible happened or they call, never, ever, ever have your conversations then because you're too angry. And if you get angry, kids don't listen to you. If you come at them and you start, this? This is how I raised you? You are breaking my heart. You think the baker's kids do this shit? They're going places. You? Think I'll listen to that? Ever. You know what they're going to listen to? Their favorite meal. Cook them something. Take them out somewhere. Sit with them. Take them fishing. Take them for a walk. Do whatever they care about and then come at them with some compassion, concern. I love you so much and I've watched you turn into this amazing, unique person and I don't want to control your life. The last thing I want to do is try and make you some carbon copy of me and like, I want you to do your own thing. But I'm really nervous for you because I'm seeing you do some stuff that I'm afraid is going to cause way more pain in your life than you need. So the first thing we got to do is gather a ton of information. Here's examples of what we want to get from them. It's a brand-new slide. It's in terrible order, sorry. The next thing we want to do is express our concern and then we want to come up with a solution. Is the solution going to be another conversation? Alright, well, this didn't go so great. Let's talk next Sunday. Or why don't you try these things? Agree to boundaries, okay? I recognize you're going to consume. You're not going to do it in this house. You're never going to be intoxicated in front of me and you're absolutely agreeing never to drive or to get in the car with somebody who's intoxicated. Cool, cool. After that, we love to see somebody to agree to stop all use. And if they agree to do that, I'm going to strongly encourage you to call in some professionals right away because mental health issues are real that they're dealing with. The forms of treatment that we have formed start in IOP, intensive outpatient, then go to residential where they live there for thirty, sixty, ninety, whatever. And if somebody is in acute, in a state of psychiatric emergency, if they are at risk to self for others, which is really real, really real, you get them to advanced medical care now. Like, we don't have to wait around on this thing because it's not about the weed. They're not going to overdose and die from an overload of their endocannabinoid system, but they might hurt themselves and they might hurt somebody else. Get them to advanced medical care right away. Blah, blah, blah. And here's my last thing for you, is if you have to go through this with somebody who you care about, you're going to be a train wreck afterwards. Amen, moms? You got to set up some stuff for yourself. There's a great program called MarAnon for parents of people whose loved ones, drug choices, THC. We need support as well as anything else. I tell you, I do this every, every week. There's not a week that goes by that I'm not right in an intervention with somebody who's in extreme pain. And boy, does it take it out of me. I got to talk to friends. I got to fish. I got to be... I gotta talk to friends, I gotta fish, I gotta be okay, I gotta hit a meeting, I gotta keep my own recovery central. So the thing I'd encourage you, parents, is remember yourself in these situations. It's not all about the young person. Obviously, we could discuss this sort of thing forever, but I would like to bring our panel on so I can sit and listen a little bit more. I hope that helped a little.
Thank you so much, Ben. I think this is the third time I've heard you talk and and I've read your book and I still am learning things every time. So, and we'd actually love for you to stay up here so you can field some questions alongside our panelists, if you don't mind. I'm sure folks have questions for you as well. So I'd like to bring up our panelists who are in the audience. I believe we have Dr. Nicholas Hurst from Providence, who's an adolescent psychiatrist. Yeah, we we have Linda Wolf and her son Kobe, who are gonna share some of their lived experience Yeah, and Kami Myers, who is a vice principal, I think, at Porter, Porter Middle School to share a little bit about what she's seeing in the middle schools. So I'm gonna ask each of our panelists to introduce themselves and share a little bit about why they were interested in joining this conversation with us tonight. So if you could each take just a couple of minutes to share who you are and what motivated you to be here tonight. And I think we'll, we've heard from Ben, we'll start with Kami and move this way. And then after that, we're gonna take questions from the audience. And I have a few prepared questions, if nobody has burning ones, but I'd love to let you all have a chance to ask your questions, too.
Thank you. So I'm Kami. I am the assistant principal at CS Porter Middle School. This is my second year as an assistant principal, a second year as administrator. I've been in education for 16, 17, something. Last year, as just sort of my jumped in with both feet teaching, or at the middle school level and as assistant principal, I deal primarily with the really fun stuff, the disciplinary action and the more student-facing problems that we have. And I just, even in the first few months, was so overwhelmed with the amount of substance use that that I was seeing and witnessing. And so I quickly just started reaching out to my community members and met Leah and her team and just was trying to really understand, first of all, and just learn more about cannabis and underage use in Missoula and then try to find some alternative systems for just the disciplinary action. You know, it was just mostly citation, out-of-school suspension, and we're really missing some of that educational pieces to go with it. So that is what brought me here tonight.
My name is Nick Hurst. I'm a child and adolescent psychiatrist at St. Pat's. I deal with this pretty much every day with the kids and teenagers I work with. If not with mental illness, they're also experimenting with weed. Just this afternoon, I diagnosed someone with a severe cannabis use disorder with dependency. And the person wants to quit, which is great. But also is terrified of quitting because they feel like that's the only thing that helps with their anxiety, with their depression, with their trauma. Yeah. So I love working with youth on substance use disorders. It really is my jam. I love it.
Hi, I'm Linda Wolf. I'm a mom of Kobe. And I, I wrote a little thing for doctors when he was in the hospital. He's been involuntarily committed three times from cannabis-induced psychosis and it was just awful. But anyway, I just want to quickly just tell you what I wrote for, part of what I wrote for the doctors and for people who don't understand what it's like for parents. So the fear of Kobe being so vulnerable, out there wandering on the street, out of his mind was awful. All we could do was continue to call the police over and over again to get him to the hospital. That in itself is a traumatic experience to call the police and explain 19 times a week to different police officers, trying to tell them what has happened to Kobe. And yes, it's true, it truly is weed and he is in a psychosis. And how is, and and how he's just out of his mind and he cannot take care of himself. Kobe wasn't even sure I was his mother, he had no money, no phone, nothing, darting in and out of traffic, talking to random people, giving away everything he has or it being stolen. The police are not mental health experts and they don't understand that cannabis can do this to someone, not all of them do. Some do. It's true, it does not happen to all people, but for sure, it happens more than ever before due to the high THC levels in weed. Once in a while, there would be an officer who did get it. The law states that they must be in danger to themselves or others in order to be involuntarily committed. How that is interpreted is the question. The bottom line is the police really need some training on how to help parents to get these kids to the hospital rather than be too afraid and forced, to force them into a hospital against their will. If they were only even in for a few days to get some medication, you know, to to come to a baseline of some sort would be so helpful. Unfortunately, calling the police seems to be like the only way to get the right help, especially if they're over the age of 18, and that should change. So I'm hoping that eventually this gets, this awareness gets out there and the police, law enforcement, the the people that make laws, the people that are in control of some of this stuff can start to change that and help these kids. That's it.
My name's Kobe. I'm 22. And I had experienced three pretty severe cases of cannabis-induced psychosis. And, you know, after hearing that, I kind of think about that name, like cannabis-induced psychosis and, you know, maybe it should be THC-induced psychosis or like, I don't know. Anyway, I had severe issues in the past with weed. You know, it wasn't too long ago, it was only like three or four years ago, and I've been sober two years and it's been difficult, but you know, I think that, I think that a lot of people see weed or THC kind of as a umbrella term. Whereas there's so many different aspects. If you're uninformed, I don't know how to talk to you about it. Like, I can't child people into understanding what I have learned over the past years. It's more of a street experience in terms of I've, I've seen, interacted with a lot of people who, hundreds of people who have had a lot of issues. And I've been with them doing shit. You know, I'm sorry for cursing, but, you know, I never injected anything, which I'm really happy about, and I will never do it unless there's a nurse or I'm a nurse. And then, I mean, I've done meth, amphetamine, one time. Well, it was a course of one time. It was two or three weeks in California and and it was not good. It started in Oregon, Portland, where it all starts. You know, so like, I just really think that people are misinformed and they don't understand anything.
I am gonna open it up to questions from the audience and if nobody jumps in, I've got some written out, but I would love to...
Maybe can I just jump in? I want to comment on that. I will confiscate things that I like, don't even have a vocabulary for. And I like, I know that, you know, obviously they smell or whatever, you can tell that it's a cannabis product. And I'm like, I, I truly have not even a guess as to what this, what this is or how you use it or anything. So I guess, there you go. There are a lot of us, adults are truly clueless for a lot of how, how it's being consumed or what products are.
Look, look, Kevin, where's my thing? You want to see some great... We get to 99.9% THC potency. These are things called distillates. A distillate is THC separated to submolecular level to deliver it. That's a distillate that's pretty cool. Distillates present as vasodilators, or vasconstrictors, not vasodilators. There's butter, wax, shatter, concentrates. These are concentrates about the consistency of a jolly rancher. This is an oil, what we still call cannabis. This is a live resin, preserves terpenes and flavor profiles. This is a different form of concentrate, more concentrates, concentrates in powder form, concentrates in glued form, concentrates in syringes, three lotus, you can hitch dabs. They're all blah, 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 blah. Now vaping, all, everything inside of a vape pen is a different form of concentrate. You want to see something wild? Here's what happens with your edibles. These are all edibles with up to 1,000 milligrams, 100 legal servings inside of them. You have condiments like hot sauce and ketchup and mustard and coffee and cake, coffee and tea and chai tea and juice, and mix it up, juice and soda with 350 milligrams in it and syrup, if you keep up with rap culture, and THC water, THC ice cream, chocolate, granola bars, hard candies, nasal mist, swappable pills, intoxicating on the skin, in fact, similes to look like other things. THC tarts, candies, THC potato chips, THC gum, THC suckers, THC candy bars, cookies, THC caffeine, water soluble, tasteless, smellless THC drops, THC breast spray, THC underarm applicator, THC sex lube, of course, THC tampons, THC suppositories, and THC wipes.
Now are there questions from the...
Are those, are those, are those alcohol wipes?
No.
Are those, those are four products of, right? They're real, they're just normal alcohol wipes, right?
Yeah, but it's saturated in a concentrate.
Oh my, no way.
Yeah, so that goes where the sun don't shine.
Oh.
Listen, for all of you who are too young to have had medicine delivered directly, it's coming. It's a very efficient way of getting medicine into you, right? You can't imagine what's out there. You can't imagine.
I haven't seen that one.
Me neither.
Ben, can you show the gummy bear example, too? I think that's really important. Yeah.
The problem you have with these is multiple servings inside of one package. So 10 milligrams being legal serving in Montana. You have these gummy bears that we sell here, and so don't forget to cut them into tents because each gummy bear has 100. But then we can get up to, we're infusing them with distillates. And if you remember, the distillate was these. So it's not infused with organic material anymore, it's infused with distillates. And, look at that, 100 legal servings in a cake pot. 100 legal servings in a grape crop.
I kind of want to make a point with this because I think that the word substance abuse is huge and and it's more of like a use issue. People are using it wrong if they do use it. And if you do use it, I don't care. Don't force it on my throat, don't do anything about me. It has nothing to do with me, has nothing to do with anybody but who you are trying to help, you know, or, you know, they're in suffering and it's obviously from THC. They're using it wrong, first off. They're using it wrong. Second off, why are they using it? Third off, do they need to stop using? I don't think the number one thing we should be thinking about is immediate use stoppage. Because when that happens, you get depressed, you get suicidal, you get causal things that happen when you stop using. So if you do that to people, you cut them dry, no more for you. That's what we do with people, all sorts of different people, heroin addicts, what do you give them? Suboxone, you can give them, yeah, yeah, you give them alternatives, basically the same thing, just in a different form. You know, with weed, we try to do it. You know, my personal experience with certain medications has been very bad. Insert lithium. I can't do that personally, made me go crazy because I didn't stop. And I'm sure it would have been a little bit different had I, had I completely cut off weed or had I started with something that I'd take later, like propranolol, it was a good one. You know, there's, there's, there's a couple medications that I don't disagree with using, but I also don't think that we should be looking as like a, you know, one pill solves it all type deal. It's not that, it's more of an approach with, like a societal approach rather than, you know, a judging doctor coming down on you with meds. I don't think that will ever help anyone. I really don't. And if you don't establish a connection and you are only coming down with punishment or involuntarily, you know, putting them in jail, whatever. If you're forcing them to do something that they don't want to do, they're not going to change their behavior ever, ever, ever. You're going to make that, you're going to reinforce that behavior because all they want to do is piss you off now because you made them really mad. You know, and you don't want to do that. You should look to helping people as, don't make them upset, try and keep, you know, a good line of connection and communication where, you know, they're not getting violent, they're not getting upset, you know, and I know they're gonna get upset. That's fine, though. Allow it, you know, smile, be happy with them instead of trying to change them. It's not your position to change anybody, it's your position to help them change themselves.
Yes, and Leah has a...
Oh, yeah, here.
If we need that for...
I have two questions from both the clinical perspective and just the lived experience perspective. And if somebody is trying to reduce use, I've read different things about it's cold turkey or it's tapering. And from both of those perspectives, if, what is more effective? And then in looking at treatment programs, besides looking for places that treat co-occurring disorders, what else should people be looking for?
I think it's pretty individual. There are some people who are super motivated just to go cold turkey and there are a lot of people who are not motivated at all to go cold turkey. So a harm reduction approach is helpful for those folks. So let's say they're doing like, I don't know, 80% dab pens, right? 80% THC. Then what I do in clinic is like, hey, how about trying 75% or 70%? I had a 12-year-old who was using and they wanted, hmm, they felt that they got high with the same amount of THC by using a dab pen and using a tea. So sometimes they would take the flower and infuse it in hot water and drink it. Like, perfect, that's your harm reduction approach. Do that instead of dab. Yeah. And then treatment approaches, you asked about? There are some intensive outpatient programs here. They're all virtual, though, when sometimes it's hard to connect by a screen, you know? In my outpatient practice, I have people come back sometimes weekly and we just talk. I sometimes connect them with a therapist. And in my outpatient practice, I do a lot of motivational interviewing that Ben mentioned and highlighted. It's helping people and parents, I also work with parents a lot, helping them develop that motivation to cut back or to quit. And oftentimes, they're ambivalent, right? On one hand, they want to quit, they want to cut back, they don't want to be dependent on anything, right? Adolescence is that part where you just want to be independent. And if a substance is controlling them, they don't like that at all. So on the one hand, they want to quit, but on the other hand, they don't. Like, it helps them relax, it helps them sleep, it helps them eat. It helps them have fun with other friends who are using. So it's working with that ambivalence to change. Did that answer your question?
I haven't spoken. Oh, is anything being done in the high school and middle schools to, you know, talking to the kids about this or...
Yeah, so I can speak for MCPS specifically. We do have an approved health curriculum. We use the CATCH curriculum as our approved, you know, anti-drug that, that addresses the use of cannabis. There are oftentimes where we are bound by legislation, too, of how much we can teach and address beyond our adopted curriculum. So we're sometimes not able to go, you know, more individualized with instruction or or pull in other resources just due to, you know, we have to follow what our school board has approved for a curriculum. So, so yes, we teach it, especially, like, this is an education jargon-y word, but like at the tier one level, all students do have drug education in their health classes. And then we, I know that the high schools have specific counselors for drug use. And then we try to, you know, address it, but again, we have, we're, we're kind of tied to using that approved curriculum. And I've, again, worked with our community members in lots of different ways, trying to figure out different alternatives. And we're looking into different programs next year. We're gonna work with our nurses, the MCPS nurses, to be able to provide like a out-of-school suspension alternative where parents and kids can opt into like a two-day intensive program. So again, some of that is a little hypothetical still. So again, some of that is a little hypothetical still, we don't have it all worked out, but certainly we're trying, yeah.
I'm just scaring the crap out of the kids.
When I talk to kids, I don't do the scare.
Oh, you know.
I talk to kids about mental health and impairing substances with it, but I also hate talking to kids. So I'm trying.
Same.
I will add, I know that our school resource officer has come in and done a really powerful talk with our kids and who, let's see, we've had some, Molly came in and so, yeah, we tried to bring in some community members and speakers as well, yeah.
Yeah, I think that it's really, I'm just going to jump in, I'm sorry. I think it's really important to have, you know, not just this trying to scare somebody because obviously if you're just giving that side, it's not showing all the other sides that kids are actually seeing, right? And so having, like Ben, I loved what you were talking about, it's like asking questions, what do you, like, you know, what do you think? Like, having conversations, that's really important, so, yeah.
And I like to add that I think it's, you know, the schools are really trying to do a lot and we've partnered with our community members. I think it does need to be a community effort to go out and, I'm just going to be really blunt, like, let's go talk to the Cookies store about marketing to our kids and making, you know, that brand a really cool thing. And how can we as a community try to step in and not, you know, perpetuate this, the marketing of it, right? I have to dress code that Cookies brand almost weekly, so. And that, so that's just really local and personal to me, but how can we try to flip that script for our kids that it isn't, you know, viewed as trendy?
Okay, so did you know what Cookies, I'm sorry, did you know what Cookies was, but the first time you saw the sweater? Or did you have to like?
I brought my two young children into the store to get cookies.
Oh.
Truly, I was like, oh, another cookie store.
Uh-oh.
So opened the door and Cookie's like, let's go down to Mary's, Mary's Mountain Cookies. So, no, I had no idea, not totally. And, and like today, just had a really sweet grandma who bought her son the beanie and thought it was like, it was blue, like the Cookie Monster. So, yeah, it really is, yeah, thanks.
So like I'm saying, people don't know anything that's going on. And it's not even you, it's literally so many people. And it's the kids and it's the teachers and it's the parents and it's so many people. And it's, I'm not trying to say like faith is, like hope is lost, look, keep faith in it, but like, there needs to be change or something because, you know, what I think the bigger problem is versus going to the dispensary and being like, hey, change your branding, you go to the kids and be like, hey, look at this branding, why is this like, study it and then be like, okay, why shouldn't you do that? You know, tell the kids about it, stop trying to hide it, it's not, it's not a voodoo thing anymore. And people try and act like it and try and keep information from kids. They're going to find out and they're going to trust the person who tells them a lot more than the person who tried to fucking lie. I guarantee it. So just really, I really would take that one down as like a big, big important note, like, don't lie to them, be upfront and honest, tell them what they want. Oh.
I actually just wanted to.
Sorry.
I wanted to pop in on this conversation because I actually did an assignment, I think, like six months ago that went over the same kind of branding issues, except that it was with Juul and vapes. And aside from Juul's website just being full of bright colors and fun designs, there's also the anti-vaping ads that come across with the same sort of nonchalance, I guess. There's no more, I guess it doesn't feel like anybody is trying to really drive the point home that this can be dangerous anymore. Now it's just on branding and on shirts and T-shirts and, you know, they sprinkle the occasional ad in there of just like, don't do this, but it's, it's getting bad. There is such a normalization of it. It's nuts nowadays.
I, okay, I have one comment on that just because I, so you argue that a normalization in a sense of promoting and saying it's good, I think that's bad.
No, it is. I think that's what you were saying.
That's what you're saying, okay, I just wanted to make sure because I think bad publicity is good publicity no matter what. I think, especially in this case with kids and your understanding that like, they've never heard of this before. It is, they're new, they're new, it's on their mind. Kids, when they learn stuff, I feel like they really will take that and they'll try and go with it. And whatever they've learned it from is going to spiral that. So, you know, you have like, for instance, a grandma at Weed Christmas or Cannabis Christmas, you know, his whole upbringing was like going to Christmas party, having and smoking with his grandparents and all that, you know, and that's different, that's way different than some people. And so the way that a person finds out something is a lot of the reason they're going to like go down a rabbit hole, you know, and so I, I really would, I don't know if going in early and being like, oh, this is bad, don't do it, I think that might be detrimental. So I don't think you want to approach it like that, but I think you want to be aware and especially be mindful of who is currently like finding out stuff, you know, like who's on the, who's on the brink of something, you know, because there's some, there's some kids that I feel like I've seen, please don't rush me, but I feel like there's some, there's some kids that I've seen, like especially growing up, where I would go like, and this is before I started smoking weed, when I was like 14. It was at Spanish class in Big Sky High School and there'd be kids, senior kids that would come in to class really stoned. And they're probably using dabs or something because they smelled ridiculously strong. And they would come in every day and they'd give the teacher a Mountain Dew and they'd be good. They, the teacher wouldn't say nothing. And I didn't really know too much about it at first, I didn't really, I wasn't really exposed to it and that closely. And so, you know, that kind of shocked me to the core. And nobody was really there to talk about it, you know, I just found it as an interesting thing. Nobody talked about it, you know, I will say that. There wasn't one meeting or anything in high school I've ever done that had anything to do with weed or THC or cannabis.
Hi, I just wanted to touch on what you were talking about, if they're going to trust the person who tells them the truth, right? I run an IOP program, which is an intensive outpatient up in the Flathead in Kalispell and up for adolescents. And so harm reduction is what we do, right? And I got this new statistics from these flyers here, right, with Ben coming into town. And so we do a lot of different harm reduction. We've got some kids that are in there just for THC and cannabis use disorder. We have some that are on meth and we're using harm reduction, so they're smoking, you know, marijuana. And I informed them and we did a little psychoeducation and I informed them about some of the statistics of the THC that they're, you know, ingesting. And their eyes were just shocked. The conversation that we got out of it was unbelievable and they really had no idea. You know, and just think about these kids who have really had some really negative consequences or now having to come to this group three times a week, you know, which they're enjoying because why, they're building that connection, they're starting to have those conversations, there's no judgment, they're able to open up honestly. And it's just a lot of that asking more questions, right, asking more questions. And, but once I informed them with this information, it's like, what's, how's this going to change for them, right? And making those informed decisions now as they go out and starting to learn actually what they're consuming. They have no idea. They really don't know. So just having this information now and what we can do with it is really amazing.
Oh, I was just, she had a question and she's ready to ask it.
Who'd it?
It's you.
It's you. Okay, well, so I feel really entwined in this because I'm an herbalist, I'm an addiction counselor, and I have a son that's going to be going to Porter next year. So, I'm like, holy cow. So really, I liked how you touched on cannabis, it's not so much cannabis that's the problem, right? It is the THC. And as an herbalist, it's something I've been talking about for a long time. We've just been noticing how it's, it's like on steroids, it's not even the plant anymore, right? Like, you see all this stuff that's not the plant anymore. And so I guess what I want to ask is like, help me as a mom, what should I, what are you seeing at Porter? And, yeah.
I guess I just want to really reiterate that it is not all. And I think that's something that is important if you walk out of here, I want everyone, parents, to recognize that even though you might, you know, it might be being targeted or, you know, it seems like it's everywhere, it really isn't everywhere and it isn't all. And, you know, most kids and all, you know, the strong majority are not doing that. So I think that's, let's normalize that. Let's normalize that kids these days mostly are abstaining. And kids these days are really doing amazing things. And I just, I don't want to go like, oh, you know, it's the anxious generation and they're self-medicating. That is happening, certainly. But again, always coming back to saying like, most of the kids are not. And I think again, if you look back at your own childhood or, you know, you can, you sort of have that mindset of like, yeah, you knew there were kids using or things like that. So, and that's true for all schools in Missoula, there isn't one where, oh yes, that's where all the stoners go and everything like that. So I think, I think if any administrator was up here, that they would have that same sentiment. So I want to make sure we put that out there. I think that's exactly it. I think you, you talk about what the most, most kids are the most, right? Like, have the conversations about what is healthy, what is, what is inspiring to them, what promotes your kids to make good decisions. I also have a middle school girl right now and she probably has more horror stories than most because, you know, I come home and I was like, oh, here's another thing you can never do, or here's something else, you can't, you have to, you know, look out for this. And so all my friends always sees me like, they're going to, we're going to send our kids to your house to have the hard conversations. But I, I really think being honest about it, I like my kids, my kids at school and my own personal children, I would rather them hear about it from me in an opportunity where we can really talk about it. So I think keeping open communication, I think, you know, if you say like, what happened today, you know, especially if you have middle schoolers that are like, nothing, you know, it was fine, it was fine. So like finding that avenue, whether it's like in the car, driving to sports or whatever activities, right, we all drive, finding those questions that will get kids to open up. Sometimes I like to ask my kids, my, like, did anybody have a hard day or did you notice anybody, you know, that, sometimes even ask like, got in trouble or things like that. Sometimes that just helps open up conversations that then they can be like, well, I think, you know, you know, that sort of, you can, you ask the right questions to your kids, then they will start to tell you what they are seeing. And then just always like letting them know that they can come to you with questions and that you will tell them the truth. I'm really, I don't really like to sugarcoat things. I mean, I think age-appropriate conversations are important, but I think just making sure you're honest. And then if you don't know, like, my daughter and I, we sit down and we Google a lot of things together and we'll have that conversation. And then truly, I can't say this enough, there should be no privacy when it comes to your kids' technology and cell phones. And if you really want to know what's going on with your teenager, look at their phone and their, what is their social media feeding them? I really, again, we talk about the fully-formed brains and I think that communication, they just need, you need to have really clear boundaries with, with what they are looking at and communication they're receiving. Some of the apps, especially Snapchat, make it almost impossible, but I think that's a great avenue for conversations as well.
I'd like to add on to that, actually. My name's Jaclyn, I work at the Health Department with Leah and with Faith and the Coalition. I think Kami has a brilliant point here, talking about this in a very positive framework. Rather than normalizing the stereotype that all of these kids are using cannabis, we should be talking about the fact that around 75% of kids in Missoula and in Montana are not actually using cannabis. And starting those conversations young while still being age-appropriate is really important. And we've actually been working at the Health Department to develop a toolkit that you guys can utilize to have some of those conversations. It's a website called CanWeChat.org, that's C-A-N-N-wechat.org. And it has a lot of that information, like what Kami's saying, you know, you go on Google and you find all of this different information. The information we have on our website has been heavily researched and it all comes from very credible sources. So it's, it's a great area that you can go to, A, find that information, but then it also includes information on how to start those conversations. I mean, Kami mentioned that one of the best ways you can do is as you're driving around with your kids in the car, you know, it's a safe spot for them to have that conversation. But starting that can be challenging. So on the website, there are pointers and basically conversation starters like, oh, you know, I heard this ad on the radio the other day for a dispensary. Have you heard this? You know, what are your thoughts on that? You know, especially in October during Red Ribbon Week, which is a national drug prevention awareness campaign, a lot of the schools in Missoula have conversations in their health classes about this with kids. Myself, Leah Fitch-Brody, Molly Blair, we all tend to go into schools during this time and we have conversations about substance use and substance use prevention. That's a great time to start having those conversations with your kids, you know, it's part of health class curriculum. Find out when that is and then talk to your kids about it then.
Thanks. Okay, we'll allow one more quick question and then we need to wrap up. I'm being cognizant of time, but.
Gwen, did you want to do your question? No. Okay, great. Anyone else?
Diana, yes.
Oh, whoops, I don't know, it keeps swelling. I have, I work with youth on a regular basis, I have a question for Ben. Is there any communities across the US that have been able to leverage youth voice to increase tax or increase the age of you purchase?
Yeah, it tends to be one of the more effective ways and traditionally too, the big shift we saw with alcohol and driving this country was moms. The big shift that we saw when it came to opiates was mostly physicians. And we're seeing a really significant shift when it comes to THC with youth voice and adolescence. So organizing those voices and giving them a place to be heard is just absolutely fantastic. I think that, I, I think that there's this, the pendulum's swinging somewhat unpredictably right now, but I think that the younger generation now, like fifth grade, sixth grade and down, they're going to grow up with a different kind of healthy fear of THC than, say, your generation did, for example, because it was so different. Yeah, get those kids talking, man, get them involved.
Well, this has been a very fruitful discussion and we could talk about cannabis and youth use, I think, for hours, at least my family would say I could. I want to just give our panelists, I'm trying to be cognizant of the time, we're a little over time, but I would love to hear just if you had one last thought, each of you, if there was something that you would like to share to either your peers or parents or community members, policymakers, what is it that you would like our community to know about cannabis? Anyone wants to take that?
Macro data is just that. There's always exceptions to every single rule. I always be very, very careful with my always nevers. And I always try to remember that the individual is an individual. And that we all respond much better to love than we do to anything else, but sometimes we just got to be straight. If it wasn't for that little order, I wouldn't be alive today. So every individual can respond differently, but if your heart's in the right place when you're trying to talk to them, and I'm not, this isn't hyperbole, this isn't silly little hippie bullshit, if you're angry, if you're coming at it from a position of anger, if you're not going to help, step back, consider the individual, get yourself fit spiritually, whatever that means to you, and then we go ahead, because everybody's different.
I guess I just want to say, let's keep the conversation open and let's approach it as a community. I think it can't, you know, just be policymakers or just educators, things like that, like let's continue to keep open and trusting conversations regarding it, both just mental health and as we move into new and different ways of educating kids, especially with remote learning and things like that, just keep talking and keep problem solving and let's normalize what most kids are choosing not to engage.
I would say be hopeful. I couldn't do my job if I didn't see people get better. And I see people get better all the time. So be hopeful. I think that would be my last thing.
I would say if, as a parent, if you, if you have kids that have cannabis-induced psychosis or have issues with substance, I don't know what it's like with just substance abuse, I just know what, I guess it's substance abuse, but the cannabis-induced psychosis is what hit us and we had no idea until it was in, he was in psychosis. is what hit us and we had no idea until it was in, he was in psychosis from it and college started, you know? But parents seem to think that it's just weed and I have been called from other parents that, that don't know really what to do and they, they think that it's really just going to pass, but if they're, if they're in a psychosis, they need medication, right? I mean, they need help, they need medication. And so parents need, I just think the awareness needs to get out there for parents so that they know to get them into the hospital, get them help. Yeah.
First off, I'd like to thank Ben and everybody who's come out and made this possible. I think this is a really good beginning because I don't see it taking off. But my, I don't know, we'll see. I remain optimistic, like you say, stay hopeful, and I do. And I'm young and I should be one of the most hopeful people, you'd think, but like, I lose hope in humanity and then I see stuff like this and I gain more hope and it's great. It's fluctual, you know? Hope doesn't just come and go, like, you gotta, you know, work for it. And so I think a lot of people, including like, you know, Sawyers, thank you for all, like, all of you, you did amazing, you know, like, everyone in St. Providence, amazing. Sandy, my mom, you know, everybody who's been helping me for the past years, I would really like to just shout out a little bit of appreciation to them because without you guys, you know, could be very different.
Well, I'd just like to thank our panelists. We have a small gift for each of them. If Leah, Shannon, if you guys could bring some gifts up, where they include, I think, a fancy mug and some homemade caramels from Shannon, Sophie's sweets. We're not going to talk about sugar addiction tonight.